Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for January the 24th, 2017. Could I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Arthurreath.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Mayor Marion.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all of the elected body is present.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our community and the town of Rising Sun, on behalf of our citizens and our elected body, God, I ask that you be with everyone as they leave tonight and be with our police and our emergency services, as well as our troops serving overseas, God. Please continue to watch over our community and be with us as we leave here today. In Jesus' name, amen. All right. There's nothing under public presentations. There is something underneath business meeting items, and that is an annexation agreement for 401 Telegraph Road, and that is the Town Administrator. And I believe, Town Administrator, this is the first step in the process.
That is correct. Mayor, if you'll give me one second, despite the fact that we turned the computer on two hours ago and decided to do a Windows update right before you returned to the meeting.
That's all right.
So I just want to bring these items up. Okay, what you have before you is an annexation agreement. And let me first point out that we have the representatives of this project. Jeff Sellers, if you want to introduce the parties with you.
Sure. This is Chris Murthy. He's the owner of the Dollar General and the property that we're speaking of just outside of town, on the other side of the Sunoco. This is Julian from Helsa Engineering, and they're doing the -- they're helping Mr. Murphy with the project. And I'm the real estate company representative.
Okay. All right, so what you have before you, and I'm going to speak a little bit on secondhand information, because the last time the town did any annexations was prior to my tenure with the town of Rising Sun. And I know that this agreement has sparked a little bit of concern as to exactly what is happening here. I've heard various stories from people that have been here longer than I have that there have been occasions in the past where some feel that they've read in the paper that an annexation took place after the fact that it had -- after it had already occurred. Others have said and have expressed some of the technicalities that may or may not have been followed per code back in the day. And I can't speak for what the state law recommended or said back at that time. I can tell you that like everything else we've been trying to do here at the town of Rising Sun over the past couple of years is be more businesslike in the way we set forth to do things. And so we are taking -- we are utilizing a concept which is basically an annexation agreement. And my impression in the past is the town would get the application from a property owner to annex into the town, and a resolution would be created. There would be, maybe, maybe not, some public hearings, again, what I've heard secondhand. And then the town would ratify the resolution or reject the resolution, which it has also done in the past. And there would be, you know, in that mixture would be public hearings, communications with the county, all the required steps. What we are doing is utilizing the annexation agreement, which we're putting -- we are doing it at the front end, which is basically an understanding of who is going to do what in here. And so this annexation agreement between Murthy Associates LLC and the town of Rising Sun basically is generally outlining what the property owner would like to do with the property and why they are interested in annexing into the town of Rising Sun. And there are some definitions that are spelled out in this annexation agreement, which are definitions commonly referred to by the State of Maryland. So as we go through the process, there's no miscommunication. It may or may have happened back in the early 2000s. There is things that have to take place, or the annexation is contingent upon certain things taking place. There's also paperwork that has to be provided by the applicant, which is a, basically a surveyed plat of the property with all the legal descriptions, a surveyed piece of a document that gets sent to us. And our job is to create a resolution out of that, get comments from the state, get comments from the county, and go through whatever procedures or wants or desires they may have, have public hearings, advertise it in the newspaper for a public hearing that everybody can come out and learn more about it, or speak for or against, or whatever their pleasure is. And then at the conclusion of that is when the elected body would then consider the actual resolution that gets adopted, which either rejects the annexation into the town of Rising Sun or accepts the annexation. Long story short, this is not an agreement saying this property is coming into the town of Rising Sun. It's a business arrangement to make sure that everybody clearly understands what their responsibilities are going forward, to move forward through this process. This is one of about four steps in here. One of the things that I will say for the benefit of the residents, because we, obviously we are in a tough situation with our sewer and water infrastructure, and we have impact fees. And one of the things the developer would be responsible for doing right up front is to pay those impact fees, basically as I'm buying into the system. And I want to take a second to explain impact fees, because I've had some people contact me and ask me about this. The impact fee is basically, and this might not be the right way to describe it, but imagine joining a club where there's an application fee to get into it. And to some degree, that application fee is to buy in to help pay for some of the things that may have happened in the past to get the club where it's at. So in this particular case, our residents just, you know, were on the hook for financing a lot of water upgrades, a lot of sewer upgrades, and were on the verge of financing for a lot of water upgrades. It wouldn't be fair for people who want to jump into the system later on to just simply pay for their piping in front of their property. They have to pay an impact fee, and that impact fee is just under $20,000. And that's basically them making a contribution to what the existing taxpayers or property owners in the town have already paid or are committed to pay. So that's what an impact fee is. It's basically to buy in to the system here. The property owner also has to pay for all of the upgrades that take place, the sewer and water. In addition, one of the things that we put here in this agreement is we would like to see the town of Rising Sun continuing its efforts to be a walkable community. And so one of the things that would be in this agreement, depending upon whether or not the annexation is successful in the future, the property owner would have to install public sidewalks in front of it. So that as other sidewalks may or may not be put in front of the Sunoco, for instance, it could connect to the Maple Heights Development. And so to some degree, we could start to build the network of sidewalks. So those are the types of things that we basically say to the property owner, okay, if you want to get in, this is what you need to do to be able to get in. And this annexation agreement is only spelling that out. It's not annexing anybody into the town tonight. I know the -- I've also been asked the question, well, how do you do it if you're in a sewer and water moratorium? It is not unusual for communities to go through the annexation process. Quite frankly, if you look at the history of the town of Rising Sun, one of the reasons why the town got itself sideways back in the day is because it annexed a lot of properties with absolutely no hope of providing the sewer and water. That's not the case here. We have a sewer solution. We have a water solution. By July of this year, we should be putting a shovel in the ground. The Planning Commission is currently working to make sure that our land development codes and zoning codes are where they need to be. And at some point in the very near future, the Mayor and the Board is basically going to be, basically saying the town of Rising Sun is open for business. I can't say enough that without adequate infrastructure, none of this stuff happens. And we've talked about this before, that you have 900 users on your system that have to pay for these things that the environmental folks are telling us we have to do. So it makes sense to expand your user base, collect impact fees, get people coming in here. Remember, a couple months ago, I put on, I talked about on my Town Facebook, Town Administrator page, I put the question out there of what type of economic development people would like to see. And we had hundreds of responses, Dunkin' Donuts, Ruby Tuesdays, all kinds of stuff. This is the kind of thing that if it goes through, it's one of the stepping stones to be able to start to provide those things. I think it's important to state that we are also not, in this, this annexation agreement takes a while to go through all the process because of the legal timing that's required for hearings, advertisements, meeting with the county, meeting with the state. So it takes a little bit of time to go through that process. This is not where they start running sewer and water tomorrow, or next week, or next month, and they have an allocation, and other people that are in the system don't have an allocation. This is all being timed so that when we're able to say we are open for business, people that are in a position to be able to move forward will be able to move forward, and that's the key here. So I just wanted to spell the ideas that, the concept that this is, hey, we're annexing this property in the town tonight. That's not the case. This is a business arrangement that we're making. So with that.
All right. Gentlemen, you have the agreement in front of you. Could I get a motion to approve moving forward with the annexation agreement, Step 1? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the annexation agreement itself? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Could the screen be scrolled up so you can read the rest of the question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So let me ask you this. Do you want to read through the whole thing, or do you want me to show you the highlights of it, taking into the sections, whatever people want?
Thank you. All right. Moving forward, the next business item is actually a commissioner appointment. And I have a brief statement I want to read. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to all that expressed interest in this position. As I've said before, public service is a big venture that should never be taken lightly. This position will have an impact on your family, your friends, and your time. You will be loved by some and hated by others, and you will have to make difficult choices that some may not agree with. So I want to say a big thank you to everyone that expressed interest in this position. Tonight, I nominate a woman who has been part of our community for many years, someone who has sat in this room for almost my entire tenure as Mayor and Commissioner. She's educated on our town issues. She cares deeply about our community. She's heavily involved in our planning and zoning committee right now. And she also believes, like I do and the rest of the Board, that the best days for Rising Sun are the days ahead. So moving forward, I would like to formally put Pauline Braun's name forward for the open commissioner slot vacated by Commissioner LaShire. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to now ask the Clerk of the Circuit Court, Charlene Notercola, to come up and to swear in. Mrs. Braun, so Mrs. Braun, if you would please come up.
Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? I, Pauline Braun, do swear or affirm.
I do, Pauline Braun, do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Town Commissioner.
Execute the office of Town Commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations.
I interviewed Ms. Braun, as well as the Board of Commissioners, and we unanimously agreed that she was the best candidate for the position. So welcome aboard, Pauline. All right. Moving forward, the next order of business is actually citizens' input. And Ms. Braun, I take it that you don't want to speak because you were the first on that list. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and move forward. The next person on the list is Mr. Sean Keen.
Ms. Braun, congratulations. I don't come after many meetings because of several reasons. I had gotten to speaking to Jane a little bit, was going to give her some input, and I decided that I was going to come here and give you my input. I want to make one thing perfectly clear, Mr. Mayor. I'm not hiding behind a keyboard. I work a whole lot, and I see you an awful lot. I see you an awful lot, and I see you even more. I'm not hiding behind anything. I'm accessible. You stated people hide behind a keyboard and don't work. Did you forget about the email I sent you the month prior, offering you, you and I meet, and let's see how we can resolve these differences? Did you forget about that when you decided to throw that out last month? I sent that email. You ignored it. I've sent several emails to you and you, while you were sitting there, about the debt service fee and ways to get around it. It's been ignored. My emails don't get responded to. So no, I am trying to work, but I don't get any response. I get shut down because you don't like my opinion because it doesn't go with the agenda. As far as the police chief, I, the last meeting you had spoke about, you know, people asking about the officers, I'm going to make it clear that my page doesn't discuss the police. I have never said anything bad about your officers on that page. I just want to make that clear. I think your officers do a good job. The last email I sent, I actually spoke with the officer that I can see coming through my development, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning, all the time consistently. I think that's great. So I just want to make that clear, that I'm not talking about the police department on that page. As far as retaliation, yeah, it's there. Can't get anything from the Town Administrator because I spoke up. But when I carried his messages, I was handed what I wanted, including an investigation on one of your police officers that should have never been released, handed it without asking. So that happens. What other retaliation is there? Let's see, there were, all of a sudden, increased police patrols passing my house. Was it a bad thing? I don't know. But was it kind of coincidental that it happened right after I started speaking up? It's kind of strange to me. I wrote about you running the stop sign. I sent you an email first. All of a sudden, it was all over Facebook, and it was sent to me. You ran the stop sign. I asked that he be given a ticket, and I would be the witness, because they run it all the time. I've got you three times running that stop sign in the last couple of days. Somebody's going to hit a kid. The other day, you stopped and stared at me, and I have the video if anybody wants to watch it. You stopped and stared at me after you almost ran it, made a right turn, and almost hit a car head-on because you were too busy staring at me. Intimidation. I'm not intimidated. I'm going to say what I want to say, because political speech is the highest protected form of speech in this country, and that's a Supreme Court decision. So I'm not going to back down on that page. And nobody's going to intimidate me to do it. You've got laws broken that you all are doing. You watched them build something, and easement, run electricity out there. You did nothing about it. You don't have a fence around a hot tub. Oh, I don't have to, because it was put in before the code was there. So if a kid comes in that backside and gets in that pole and drowns, whose fault is it? It's not fair. Live up to what you want before you start passing agreements on all of us. We all take care of our property. We all do what we're supposed to do. But what do you do? We're going to pass laws, we're going to pass taxes, and we're going to pretty much put this town into bankruptcy. We don't want to hear from you because it doesn't meet our agenda. I don't know what that is that you have coming in your house, but I have a serious concern with people that appear to be carrying firearms in our neighborhood, that appeared, that with my hours sitting blacked out in our neighborhood at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. I don't know why. I'm not exactly sure what he's doing there, but it's a concern. It's a serious concern, and I think you know who I'm talking about. They have Pennsylvania tags, and they appear to be carrying weapons, open carry. Is there a reciprocity for a handgun permit from a Pennsylvania resident to Maryland? Not that I can find. It's dangerous. The meeting videos. Everybody, why don't you come to meetings? Because I cannot listen to 30 minutes worth of babble and skip through it of stuff that I already know, and I can finish a meeting in a few minutes, hear what I want to hear, and be done. I don't have to come to a meeting. This meeting theory is an old, old, old theory. The technology is such now that most places, they have it online. It's up there. You can watch it live. I could be streaming right now to somebody. But you say, oh, you have to come to a meeting. And what were you thinking in the newspaper? Come complain on the police officer. This officer back here, if I complain on him, he's now judged in the court of public opinion. And if he investigates it and finds out that he didn't do anything wrong, he's now got a black eye because I came up here and complained on him. There should be a clear process, which you brought up the last time, write you a letter even, I think you said, correct? Sign the letter so you can get back in touch with you, I believe? That's the way that should be dealt with. Nobody should come up here and complain on one of those police officers or one of those town employees where it goes out in the newspapers. Sorry, ladies, I know you've got a job to do. Or it goes around without them being in the court of, without it being investigated first. So that's apparently my three minutes, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? All right. Moving forward, we're going to move forward into Mrs. Wagner.
Patty, remember, keep me on the page.
I'm going to.
Thanks.
Just so you all know, you have two months in your books, but we're only going to cover December. So you have a yellow, a pink, a blue, and a green tab. I need you to turn to the pink tab to get to the December for governmental financial statements. And you will have, wait a minute. I see what you did. No, I'm going to ask you to turn to the blue tab. I thought she did both November and December for the government back-to-back. Instead, she did it the other way around. So we're turning to the blue tab, and this is the town of Rising Sun governmental funds. Are you there with me? Oh, you're to the next page. Then we have the letter, and then Page 3 is the page we're on. So the total assets are 381,000, total cash and cash equivalent unrestricted, is 381,148.38. Investments are 116,063.33. Taxes and service charge receivables are 425,114.30. The majority of this is the real estate taxes that is still needed to be collected. Because someone had mentioned that they wanted to know what was in the MLGIP, which is like our investment account, for the government, because the auditor combined it in cash and cash equivalent, that is 28,686.29. You'll get down to total assets are 1,065,025.49. We owe 518 dollars of accrued expenses, which is basically the taxes, feude taxes that need to be paid for unrestricted positive net position of 1,064,507.49. If you turn to the next page, which is Page 4, you will see that the total revenue for real estate taxes and money from the state and charges for services and license and permits and miscellaneous is 1,647,501.47. We have spent year-to-date, from July 1st to December 31st, 779,049.32. For those of you who are new to the process, real estate taxes gets booked all on July 1st because the bills all go out, and then we have a receivable for that. So though you see a big positive amount of 868,452.15, that kind of has to get us through till the end of the year, June. I mean, there'll be some other things that will come in, like the police grant money comes in on a quarterly basis, and that does not get accrued. So any questions with the statement of activity? Then you will find that you have budget to actual on Pages 6, 7, and 8. So you'll see the general services budget versus the general services actual, the police budget versus the police actual. And I normally, I know this is all your important thing, to see where we stand, budget to actual. So we'll go to Page 8, and you will see that we have budgeted 1,744,901.56. And because there's some timing issue with how income comes in, because when we budget it, we divide it over 12 months, other than the real estate taxes, so right now, we're a little bit under by 97,400.9. And the majority of that has to do, I believe, isn't that the park grant? Yes. So that's the park money, which obviously, until we spend it, we don't get the grant money. The budgeted expenses were 1,157,021.32. And as I mentioned before, we've only spent 779 dollars and 40, no, 779,049.32. So though we are under revenue by 97,000, we have spent less money by 377,972. So we are doing very well to budget versus actual. Any questions with regard to that? Okay. We will now go on to the little green tab, which is the proprietary. And as I have offered to the other commissioners, Commissioner Braun, if you have any questions about financial statements, please feel free to call my office, and I'll sit down and explain them to you. I have done that with other commissioners. Okay, so everybody now is on Page 3 of the proprietary fund, and we're looking at the statement of net position. I'll give Calvin a minute to get there. In cash and cash equivalent, we have 1,937,637.96. Of this, in the MLGIP for the water, is 323,790.70. And these numbers are buried in the cash and cash equivalent unrestricted. For the sewer, it's 262,573.51. You will see we have service charge receivables of 128,372.29. You will see we have service charge receivables of 128,372.29. We have amount due from other governments of 841,000 because we have money transferred between the different funds. We get down here, and the cash and cash equivalent restricted is the money sitting in the PNC for any additional work that we need done on the sewer project. That's 615,884.52. We have net capital assets. That is the sewer plant, that is the water lines, and everything else with the infrastructure of the town, including this building, the police cars, and all their equipment. That is 20,765,114.3. For total assets, no, sorry, let me take that back. The police cars are in the government. We have accounts payable and accrued expense of $10,000. The $10,000 is some money that came in that's restricted. What was that again, Calvin? I've heard Mandy tell me this.
It's an escrow fund to offset any expenses that we have to do towards a development project.
Okay.
So it's an escrow fund.
So that is a new item for this year. The amount due to other government is the Bay Restoration money of 25,760.98. And then the amount due to other funds is 932,568.45. So basically, what you see is a receivable on the sewer books for 841,000, and there is a payable on the water book for 932. Because what we have started to do is we've started to get into the water project, and we did not have enough money in the water, so we've been using some of the extra money in the sewer right now to cover that. Until, you know, everything gets processed, then we'll start getting reimbursed, which I believe we just got reimbursed for the first 750,000 in the water in the month of December. The long-term debt between water and sewer is 14,798,275.38. The net investment in capital assets is basically, you take the 20 million up above and you subtract the debt, and that is the remainder of what is not collateralized on our assets, which We have a positive net position unrestricted of 2,791,887.77. The next page is the statement of revenue expense and change in net position. You will see that year-to-date total revenue for water and sewer is 574,615.54. You will see the total operating is 859,138.27 for a negative amount of 284,522.73. And I'll say, as I say every meeting, that I don't get scared. What it is, is we depreciate. So the depreciation is a non-cash item. So you really, if a bank was looking at it, they would add that number back into the number. So we're actually still positive cash flow of, do the math there real quick, of about 140-some thousand. Then we have of connection and improvements, revenue of 16,493.47. Interest on the MLGIP of 1,756.53. And then we're paying interest expense on the sewer project, and now we're starting to have to recognize that of 90,392.44. Any questions there? Beyond that, you will see what is on page six. We will have water budget versus water actual and the variance, which is only about 13,000. That's not bad, and that's in the positive. In the sewer, you will see the variance is negative 2,720.89. And then we're going to look at the final page, page eight. So we are under budget in revenue, 142,633.63. And part of that is a timing issue within the financial statements. We are underspent by 101,752.46. And the major part of the negative is other administrative of 50,905.88. But all the other items you see are in the positive of budget versus actual. So we are, we projected we would be in the negative 243,000. Remember, we have 431,000 of depreciation there, so that's kind of just the way the financial statements work. And we actually ended up negative 284, but we have depreciation of 428,138.23. We were at the end, we were planning on being negative 385, and we actually are only negative 356. So we're positive overall bottom line to the budget by 28,468.13. Any questions there? As I said, I am always available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Welcome, Ms. Braun. For the period starting July, July, well, summer weather's on my mind, I guess, January 11th through January 24th.
Keep thinking.
During that period from January 11th through January 24th, we've responded to 228 calls for service. We've utilized 24 hours of vacation, 22.5 hours of personal time, and eight hours of holiday. In our areas, our hotspot areas for Valley View, we wrote two parking citations and did not have any other reportable issues. Along Main Street, where the complaint was for speeding vehicles, we arrested two DWIs and had 17 other violations. Disregard the stats below, in putting this together, I was sidetracked and I didn't remove some of those stats, so the criminal arrests along Main Street should not go with this On the other town road, these are the statistics the officers wrote, along Queen Street, one the equipment traffic stop and two other traffic stops. Along North Walnut Street, we stopped one for speed, one for equipment. On Mount Street, two for speed, two for other violations. And on all the other roads, we had three stops for other violations. In the area of criminal enforcement throughout the town, we served two warrants for pro-life violations, made three arrests for controlled dangerous substance, and had one arrest for a fugitive from another area. And basically, that's the report for this period unless there's any questions. Lastly, the police breakfast is coming up on February 10th, and I'd like to say thank you to the board and all the volunteers that assist in this. Again, I've always said that police officers aren't used to the attention that we get. We just go out and do the job that we do, and we pretty much don't look for any recognition. But it's always great to have, it's always great to have a town that supports police officers, and this is one of the best in the area, the best ways of showing it. So again, I'd like to thank you all. That's my report.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Augie. All right. Town Administrator, do you have a report?
Yeah, a couple of things that I want to highlight that's going on. From a development standpoint, you know, we just talked about an annexation agreement tonight. I can't emphasize enough, and I think I said this at the last meeting, the actual interest in our community. And I get these questions every once in a while of, well, why, why would somebody want to do it? And I, I guess I can, I can hypothesize all day on why people want to annex into the town, why, I've met with somebody who wants to build another senior housing unit, close to 100-bed unit. They want to develop in the town for 100 beds. I've had somebody beat about a pharmacy. We have a shop, we have two up-and-coming shops down at the old Spicer's Motorcycle that people have moved into there and they're opening up business. We, Riviera Maya, as you know, is moving into the previous location of the restaurant at Lion Drive and Main Street, and they're very excited about the stuff that they want to do. And it's, it's interesting that I've always asked the question of, well, I don't know why anybody would want to do it. Do they understand what they're getting into? Well, not only, I guess, you know, it's like, what is reality? I mean, the reality is, we have people that understand the impact fees, understand sewer and water rates, understand the direction that the town is going financially in the future, and they want to be here. And that's a good thing. And I'm baffled at times why sometimes we don't see that and just step back and look at what the market is telling us. And the market is, people are coming here with investment groups, talking about different opportunities that are available in front of, in front of us. And we have an opportunity to do something that we've always talked about doing, which is, if someone's going to make us fix sewer and water, let's put ourselves in a business position where we can control our destiny to some degree. And back in the day, there are people that have served on different boards that wondered why streets are too narrow, you can't park on it. We, you know, have a variety of complaints in the neighborhood about the driveways are not long enough, and two cars are parking in it and they're blocking the sidewalk and people have to walk out into the sidewalk. There's all kinds of inherent problems with the developments that we've had pop up in the early 2000s. And this annexation agreement is, is an example of how we are trying to rewrite the way things are done here. And you gotta believe me when I say it, we're doing it to protect the residents going forward. That's why we want it clearly spelled out. Patricia Wagner had asked me what the $10,000 was. We are looking at the fact that when people want to come and develop and do things in the town of Rising Sun, our feeling is the taxpayers should not be the ones bearing the cost of the creativity of the concept, so what can I do, what can I can't, you know, what can I not do? So that $10,000 escrow fee that we have set aside is that we don't want a potential developer chewing up 100 hours of staff time and having our engineer look at stuff and you guys look at things without there being some kind of cost behind it. So we're letting them know upfront. If you want our expertise, if you want to get into our community and you want to kick the tires on development, our taxpayers are not going to pay for that time. You're going to pay for that time. And those are the things that we are trying to do. That's what the $10,000 escrow is. That's what the annexation agreement is all about, is to try to protect people from that standpoint. So we, we have a lot of exciting things going on development-wise. People really want to do something in our community, and we need to take advantage of that while the window is open. You've heard me say at other town meetings that the town went into a sewer and water moratorium back in 2005. Commissioner Warnock and I were chasing down a question that we got about properties that might have annexed in the past, and we were sort of amazed at letters from 1992, 95, 99, 2000, going back and forth to developers saying, we're in a sewer and water moratorium, we can't do anything. And so when we look at the opportunities that Northeast has and Elton has and other communities, you can make the argument that we've been suffocating, going back, all the way back to 1999 with any, the early 1990s in terms of not having adequate sewer and water infrastructure here. So again, we collectively as a community have a wonderful asset here, and we need to be smart about how we proceed with it.
Thank you, Town Administrator. All right, moving forward, I don't think the Historical Preservation Commission has anything. Any old business? Any new business? All right. Moving forward into my report, before I go into my report, there was a gentleman, Mr. Sean Keane, who spoke this evening, and unfortunately, he left before I could address some of his concerns that he had come at me with, I guess. And during citizens' input, we really tried to let the citizens make their comments, and then if we decide to interact, we'll be during our reports. It's just the tradition that, the way that it's been built to do that. First and foremost, I did want to say that Mr. Keane did send me an email. It was dated October the 16th, where it was titled, "An Olive Branch." It took Mr. Keane two days on November the 18th to report on his group with a comment that said, "I've been quiet, not because of the attacks by Calvin's crew, but after the second commissioner resigned, I extended an officer and offered a Travis to meet him, and I offered a pledge that I would stay off Facebook. I wanted to work together, but guess what? Time has now expired. I will be back to exposing them for exactly what they are." Two days was not long enough for me to respond, so that's why I did not respond. Second and foremost, and Mr. Cassidy, if you could kind of zoom in on my face maybe a little bit, one of the things that I did want to address to Mr. Keane, because I'm sure that he will watch it this evening, is I don't mind if Mr. Keane wants to disagree with me politically, disagree with this board. He has the right on his group page to write whatever he would like regarding policy matters, political matters that he may disagree with the board. That is your right as a citizen. One of the things that I do not appreciate and that I would ask Mr. Keane to cease and desist from doing is taking photos of my house. Mr. Keane is, has, this was during the summertime when my hot tub was getting worked on, he took photos of the side and back of my home, and then he also decided to post Travis's the third driveway on the left to show the front of my home. These are all personal things. Mr. Keane also monitors my driving, leaving and coming from my development. Mr. Keane lives in the development and has a camera that faces the public way. Whether or not Mr. Keane believes that I slid on ice or did not slide on ice, when you are leaving our development on Broadleaf Court, you unfortunately do have to pull out a little bit into the way, the public way, to be able to see due to cars parking on both sides of the street. I do not appreciate feeling like I need to worry about someone photographing my home. I do not appreciate having to worry about someone videotaping my driving coming and from the, from the development. Mr. Keane also likes to make memes of me, taking someone else's face and posting pictures on his site, along with comments like, "F them, Keane for mayor, making Rising Sun honest again." Those are some of the comments that have been made. These are not political issues. These are personal issues. These are personal attacks. I do not appreciate it, frankly, because you can't pinpoint a time that I have in a public meeting, or have I gone on social media and ever mentioned Mr. Keane's name, or anything that he is doing that I believe is wrong, or people shouldn't support him, or, or anything about his home or where he lives. I've never posted photos of it, but he seems to think that that is a good thing to do. Some of the other things that he has posted... Some of the other things that he has posted include comments about myself and how funny, "I'm coming home from work in work boots. I've spent 25 years, and a kid who spends hours deciding what vans to wear almost got me. Knit wit mayor." If you think that I'm going to want to interact with you when you post things like this, this is not the way to interact with me. For me, it's all about approach. If you approach me in a calm manner, decide to sit down and talk with me, want to have a conversation, I believe that anyone on this board would do that. I know that I would do that. Yes, Mr. Keane disagrees on many policy and political matters, and that is his right. He also has the right, if he wants to, to run for office like he posted on here. But one of the things that I don't want to have to worry about is, like I said, someone photographing my home from the back, from the front, videotaping my driving. I personally am becoming aware of it. Mr. Keane liked to say that I had stopped one evening. And honestly, I did stop. My girlfriend was in the car, and I said, "There's the gentleman that is posting memes of me." I said, "Give it two minutes, and he will post on his social media account that I stopped longer than usual at the stop sign." And sure enough, by the time I got back from the movies, he had posted on his site how I was intimidating him by posting, by staying at that stop sign longer than two minutes. Personally, I think these are all personal attacks. These are not policy and political matters. Like I said, he has the right to disagree on any policy or political matter, but I don't think that it is right. And frankly, I think it's a little creepy to take photos of my house. My, one of the other things that he mentioned was my hot tub. Yes, I do have a hot tub, and I verified that it was up to code, even the current code. You do not have to have a fence around a hot tub. I also have four padlocks on my hot tub, on each four sides, to make sure that no one could potentially fall into that hot tub. So that is just some of the issues that I wanted to address. Like I said, unfortunately, Mr. Keane left this evening. But for me, it's all about approach. If you approach me in a calm manner, it may take me time because I have other meetings set up, but I will make the time to meet with you. I will make the time to entertain your comments and try to understand where you're coming from. And I believe everyone on this board would. But I don't, I do disagree with the political, I mean, with the personal attacks. I don't think that they're necessary. Going into my mayor's report, I did want to say that I attended Cecil Night along with Commissioner Warnock and our Town Administrator. It was a great evening. We got to interact with our delegation, and we also got to interact with the county members as well. So it was a great evening. I also attended, along with mayors from throughout our nation, our inauguration, which was last Friday. It was a great event. I was proud to be a part of it. And I was interested more in the patriotism of the event than the politics, to be honest with you. And I was very lucky to be there. So I was glad to not only be there, but also to represent Rising Sun. The ninth grade government class has asked me to come and speak to them, and I will be coming and speaking to them sometime in the next week or two. I will also be going to Rising Sun Middle School to speak to the students there. So I'm always excited to go out to the schools and let them know what I'm doing, let them know a little bit about my position as mayor, along with the exciting things that are coming to Rising Sun. I'm a firm believer that this annexation agreement, bringing new business into town, is a good thing. It's going to be a step process, and we're going to see where it goes. But I know this board wants to see new amenities, new businesses come to our community so that our residents will want to stay here, so our residents will want to shop here. So I'm looking forward to doing that, at least until my term ends in November. So moving forward, Commissioner Offenreth.
First of all, if I want to address the issue that happened this past month with our water bills. We had a glitch in our billing system and a lot of people, including members of this board, we got turn-off notices. It was not retaliation. I've been hearing that term thrown around here a lot lately. And nobody's retaliating against anybody. If anybody fears retaliation at this board, that's why we had a bulletproof glass wall built there because of retaliation against boards across the country. So nobody was retaliated against. It was just a glitch in an electronic billing system, and we deeply apologize for it. And I hope most of you understand, there was no retaliation meant by anybody in this. Another thing that has come to me from residents, and it's it's part of what Calvin said earlier. I've gotten complaints from residents from my neighborhood and from Brian's Grace and Summer Hill about cars being parked two and three deep in driveways, blocking sidewalks. And unfortunately, when a lot of these developments were built, they weren't built with a lot of adequate parking. Families that moved into these developments with just young children now have two, three, four drivers, three, four cars, and there's just not enough room to park. So I'm just asking everybody, if you can, be considerate to the neighbors who walk up and down the sidewalk, picking up their kids from school buses or out walking their animals. And see if there's some alternative way to park. They didn't leave us a lot of choice with the way a lot of these developments were built. And now we're stuck with it, you know? So just think about your neighbors. You know, I'm not going to be coming around as one person would be to go around and knock on everybody's door, because then they'd be saying they were retaliated against. And I'm not going to send our police officers out to everybody that's blocking the driveway. But we have ordinances in places against blocking, causing obstructions. Just like when it's time to shovel snow, you've got to clean your driveway. So residents, be considerate of your neighbors when it comes to this stuff. Another thing, you know, we appreciate Mr. Sellers, you bringing the Dollar General store people in. They sought us out for the annexation, and we're happy to entertain that, take it through the process, let everybody get their say-so. We're also very happy to see the Riviera Maya moving into the old townhouse. And Calvin, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, we are pretty full, our storefronts in town, with the exception of a couple right across the street that are pretty much in condemnable fashion and can't be used. But we're pretty full. And, you know, and we've got businesses looking to expand. So we're out knocking on the doors, meeting with delegations to help us out, as Travis and Dave did in Annapolis, working with Delegate Hornberger and our county council, along with Commissioner Schneckenberger, who's been down here to see us quite a few times. So I don't understand the comment, "We're not out filling empty storefronts." They're full, except for ones that are so badly damaged and the owner's not doing anything about it, and we can't force them to. We'd love to. We've tried. We've even boarded up some of these vacant areas because of vandals coming in, stealing copper pipes, copper wiring, and anything they can get their hands on that they can sell because of drug problems that you constantly see on the chief's report. So we are still working very diligently on this Chester Water deal and trying to make sure that we cross every T, dot every I, and that it's not going to be the end-of-the-world water billing that some are making it out to be. And we really hope that most of our residents and businesses that have been in contact with us, who understand that you could step up once in a while and back us up on this because sometimes we feel like people think we're lying about this. So, once again, we apologize for the billing thing. And the only people that truly got shut-off notices were ones that constantly are behind on their water bills and have other problems. And anytime you come in and talk to Calvin and this board, they will work with you if you have an issue, if you're paying.
Yes, I actually got a shut-off notice, and I thought the secretaries downstairs were playing a joke on me. And unfortunately, I was one of the many that got a shut-off notice. So, and I'm sure some of the other members of the board got one, too. So Ms. Braun, would you like to say anything this evening? I don't want to put you on the spot. All right, all right, thanks. All right, moving forward, Commissioner Pearson.
Dee, would you like a copy of this agreement, since you can take your time and look at it? Okay, well, I only have one copy here.
Yeah, I think we're going to go ahead and post it. We'll probably post it out. Because it's step one. And we'll have public comment on it as well.
I, as you know, February the 10th was already posted, so that took a little bit of what I wanted to say. If you're interested in volunteering, apparently, someone sent an email to my town address, and it didn't come through to me. Contact Town Hall, and I'll make sure I get back in touch with you.
For the breakfast?
Yes, for the breakfast. Jim and Heather, you, time was, you got here a little late. Would you stop and see us after?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I'm sorry, Mr. Keane left also, okay? I did start that about hiding behind a keyboard with the mayor also. And Mr. Keane is the voice of the Rising Sun Improvement Group. And I truly don't mind somebody telling me I'm wrong. I've been married for many years to a person who has consistently told me I'm wrong, but that is the way it is, okay? But when you imply that something is wrong, please let me look at it and make sure that if it's wrong, we're going to make it right. And for many of you who've been residents for many years, prior to 2010, your tax bills and all came to the town. In 2010, to simplify everything, we made it go to the county. So that's why it appears that the Sunoco business was not paying town taxes, when in reality, they have been paying taxes all along. It's just the method of where it went changed. Also investigating, the Sunoco was annexed in in '93. And it was from Land Hope Realty of Kennet Square who asked for the annexation, okay? A recent quote also was made about the Boyd annexation back in 2006. For those of you that remember that contentious night, okay? I remember it extremely well. The vote that night, the vote that night of the board was, Commissioners Majeski and Mummy voted in favor of the annexation. Commissioners Craig and Pearson voted against it. And Mayor Cox, she made the deciding vote in favor, okay? What we did not realize that night was that our prior town planner had not filled out the paperwork to, for the notification, or we would have postponed it. By that time, it was too late. The Boyd's decided at that point not to bring it back before the board for reconsideration, which if they had done that, it would have been voted in because it was already voted in. And we would have the Boyd property as annexed into town. I questioned at a town meeting about the moratorium annexation and annexation, just the way Mr. Keane was basically saying the same thing, you know? However, Jay Emery, who was a town lawyer at that time, sent me a letter, and unfortunately, I cannot find it, but I'm going to keep looking, basically explaining that, A, you can annex during a moratorium. As long as you explain, you cannot give water and sewer because of the moratorium. And also, that once you give water and sewer, it is in perpetuity. I think that's the way you say the word. Perpetuity? Is that how you say it?
Forever.
Forever, yeah. So you have to, before you make that commitment, be willing to have that service available. And I know, and I know at least five of you in this room have sat through annexation hearings. We've had them, I know, since I was on the board in 2006. There's never been an annexation without a public hearing while I've either been involved with the town or an observer of the town. Another statement that was made is, to annex into the town, you have to be connected to the town in one way or another. For example, Dollar General is touching the town at the Sunoco property line. Well, that's wrong. Or we wouldn't have even considered the Boyd property, because the Boyd property's touched nothing.
Fire company.
Huh?
Fire company is another example.
Yeah.
Well, it did touch the
Wellington, but Wellington Manor at that time was annexed, but it wasn't anything more. But that even, Bob, I'm not even sure it touched there because, or it may have touched just a little bit. So, but still, the Boyd property wasn't anywhere near in town, which is kind of what we're looking at. I guess the most troubling thing that bothers me was something that Mr. Keane said. And I really wanted to ask him this question. He made a reference to a back-room deal with the Dollar General annexation. And as a commissioner, I want to know who made, who is making that, those statements that we're doing this behind somebody's back or anything. This is the most open, this is the first time we've ever sat down and drawn up an annexation agreement prior to even considering it. So if there is, if anybody knows, one of us is going around the process, please bring it to the attention of any of us, because I tell you, I'm not, and I'm not going to. So, I'm sorry I rattled, but if you're going to tell me I'm a jerk, at least let me explain why I'm a jerk, okay? So Bob, you and I could probably spend an hour here doing that, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Warnock.
The one thing I think was kind of missed on the recent delegation to, or some of the discussions around our delegation, is they fought for, it was in the WIG, I believe, last week, that they fought for some funding to be included in the budget. And obviously, the General Assembly has, you know, final say over that. But we're hopeful that that remains in place. It's a half a million dollars.
Yeah, and I think I would also, if, I think the Town Administrator would agree, the governor's office was also very helpful in that matter as well. And it's about a half a million dollars that they are going to be potentially giving us. So we're going to stay on the delegation and make sure it doesn't get taken out of the governor's budget. So I'm sorry about that.
So I don't have, I'm actually not going to go into anything really Parks and Rec tonight. You know, and I hate to belabor the point of Mr. Keane, especially since he's not here. And I'm not even sure what items I'm going to respond to. The one thing, to the mayor's point about the video, videotaping, I mean, and I can't say for sure, but there is one camera on the back of his house that appears to be pointed into my backyard. And, you know, it's just disturbing to me that, I mean, I've, you know, I haven't, honestly, I haven't talked to him in months, you know, given some of the things that have happened. And, you know, it's disappointing. I mean, we, you know, we actually had a fairly tight neighborhood at one point, and it's sad to me to see how that's broken down a lot of ways. The issue of Sunoco, we were talking about. The county records, I mean, if you were to check any property in town, you will see that the county records doesn't show any taxes for the town of Rising Sun prior to 2010. Because as Commissioner Pearson already pointed out, that's when the county took over the collection of the taxes for the town. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's, I'll just yield my time to that.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you yielded your time, because I forgot something. And that was the formal appointments to the positions, including Mrs. Braun's. So moving forward, I would like to appoint Commissioner Offenreth as Water and Sewer Commissioner, Commissioner Pearson Pearson as our Police and Public Safety Commissioner, Commissioner Braun as our Streets and Sidewalks Commissioner, and Commissioner Warnock as our Parks and Recreation Commissioner. Could I get a motion to approve those positions, appointments?
So, I make a motion?
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, gentlemen? All right. And I am sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, the Planning Commission is meeting February the 27th, and I also need to do the ex officio. So, I'm gonna go ahead and appoint Ms. Braun to be the ex officio to planning and zoning. Ms. Braun is the former chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee. So, we are excited to have her do that. Could I get a motion to approve that?
So, move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Town meeting, and I'm not sure if, gentlemen, if you have
an issue with this, but I did want to bring this up, because someone brought it to my attention. February the 14th is Valentine's Day. I'm not sure if any of you gentlemen have Valentine's Day plans.
I've been here for my wedding anniversary. I mean, you know...
Unfortunately, I am, unfortunately, I'm still in the process of wooing a young lady. So, I may not be here on Valentine's Day, because I have to put in extra effort. So, I'm just letting that be known. So, that's out there.
Jane, that's not funny.
And the Town Hall will be closed on President's Day, which is Monday, February the 20th. All right. Is there any more business to come for the board this evening? All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Could I get a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Thank you.